Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Community Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for March 2nd, 2021. It is 7:07, a couple of minutes behind our intended schedule. Before proceeding with the agenda, let me dive into our now customary COVID-19 procedures. As Chair of the Merrimack Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 crisis, in accordance with Governor sending his emergency order number 12, which is pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this board's authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing either of the following phone numbers: or 1-929-205-6099, and entering meeting ID 996-8214-7140. This meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20, on Comcast or Merrimack TV webpage at http://merrimacktv.com. When the public comment is opened by the chair, please press *9 on your phone to raise your hand in order to be recognized. Once called upon, press *6 to unmute your audio and present your testimony. We are providing public notice of the meeting, I'm sorry, we're providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert this public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please email tthompson@merrimacknh.gov. We would adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we would adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Uh, let's see, Alastair?
I'm present, Mr. Chairman, and my study is nobody else here with me.
Okay, Neil Anketell?
I am, uh, in my house, and I am by myself.
Bill Boyd?
Good evening, this is Bill Boyd. I am upstairs in my office by myself. However, my wife and daughter are up and are moving around, they may pop in periodically. But I am prepared to participate in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Excellent, Nelson Disco?
Uh, I'm, uh, at home alone in my house, and I'm present for the meeting.
Excellent, I'm Bob Best. I'm in my office at Concord, notwithstanding the virtual background that looks like a snowy mountain. There is nobody else here with me. Let me appoint, uh, Mr. Disco into a voting position tonight. We'll put him in for Lynn Christiansen's slot. Um, let's see. Uh, by way of announcement, our next meeting after tonight is March 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, uh, remotely via Zoom. Um, let's see, we went over the *9 as your hand wave when it's your time to speak and we'll recognize you. Um, everybody that speaks, including the applicants, um, please make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record with both name and address, and speak clearly so the folks can hear you and we can record it for minutes. With that in mind, that completes the, uh, procedures for the call to order, and we are up to our Planning and Zoning Administrators' report. Tim, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you should have a memo dated February 22 from me regarding, uh, regional impact determination for tonight's agenda item for RCA Holdings. Uh, staff would recommend that the board determine that this is not a development of regional impact as it does not meet the criteria from the Regional Impact Commission.
Excellent. Uh, what's the will of the board with respect to the staff's recommendation as to regional impact?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second by Nelson Disco. Uh, let's do a roll call vote. Neil, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Alastair?
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd votes aye.
Nelson Disco?
Aye.
Bob Best votes aye as well. That's 5-0-0 for that. Tim, do you have anything else for us tonight? Any members of the board have anything for the staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you and Mr. Thompson have been read the union leader, but I see the Kodiak Veterinary Hospital is making noises that they're getting a very poor service. I don't know if you've seen it in the newspaper. They claim we're taking far too long to get their application through. Now, they were here two weeks ago, and their application was incomplete, so I think they've got a bloody nerve, but anyway.
I have not seen the article, but I can only comment that, uh, when they did appear before the planning board at the last meeting, they had just then, uh, submitted, or just, we had just received their peer review comments, uh, because there was a delay in then, the peer review fee being paid, uh, because we don't send out those to peer review until we have the escrow in place.
Well, I just bring it to your attention.
I will take a look for it.
Yeah, thank you for that, and we'll sort of take a look at the newspaper report on that, and, um...
I think if you want to look, it was on, uh, either Thursday or Friday of last week.
Thank you, Alastair. We'll take a look for that. Um, I don't want to further dive in any specifics about their application or what they might have written in the paper, because I don't want to necessarily have a debate in the paper, uh, over our work, but we shall certainly give them all the attention we can the next time they're on an agenda. Uh, other comments or questions for staff from the board? Okay, seeing none. Uh, the item three on our agenda is RCA Holdings LLC is the applicant, and Edgebrook Heights LLC is the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan to construct a 57,850 square foot self-storage facility in accordance with the Edgebrook Heights Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcel's located at 4 Benning Court in the I-1 industrial zone, tax map 2E, lot 6-2, and 7. It is Case Planning Board, uh, 2021-8. We've had eight cases already. Awesome, excellent. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before hearing from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet, you'll find a memo dated February 25th, uh, from me regarding this project. Uh, just for a bit of background, uh, the two parcels that are being considered here tonight, uh, were part of the most recent amendment to the Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit for the Edgebrook Heights project. Uh, these are at 4 Benning Court, which is the private road for the Mixed Use project. Uh, they also have a significant amount of frontage on Daniel Webster Highway. Uh, these subject parcels were originally slated to be retail convenience store, gas station, and 20,000 square feet of commercial space. Uh, but back in December, the board heard and approved an amendment uh, to the Conditional Use Permit for this Mixed Use project to allow the self-storage, uh, use at this particular location. Uh, they are proposing, uh, should this application be successful, to voluntary merge the two lots as they exist today, uh, to combine them into a single lot for development. Uh, and I also note that construction for Phase 1 of the project is currently underway, uh, with the construction of that private roadway, as well as the residential portions of the project, which were 156 units of multifamily and 76 elderly housing units. Uh, we also, uh, lastly would note that, uh, at the ti- at this time, we still do not have the, uh, peer review comments from Fussin' O'Neil. Uh, so I think the appropriate course of action for the board here tonight would be to consider acceptance, uh, discuss the project with the applicant and their representatives, and then continue out, uh, so that we can have the peer review comments before a final decision is made.
Excellent, thank you, Tim, for the introduction. Uh, who's here for the applicant?
Uh, I am. My name's Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates, uh, at my office located in Bedford. Um, with me this evening is Gordon Welch. He is, um, member of RCA Holdings LLC. Um, he is the applicant, and I also see joined with us, uh, is Bernard Plant, um, member of Edgebrook Heights LLC. They are the owner. Um, so, with that, uh, Tim, do I have the ability to share a screen?
You should, Jason.
Okay, thank you.
If not, if you don't, I do have the plans I could share on your behalf.
All right. All right. Is everyone getting that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, uh, this project, as was mentioned, was part of the, uh, Mixed Use Development, Edgebrook, um, Heights. So, located, um, old softball field and parking lot. Uh, the blue line is where the project sits in relationship to, um, the total development. Out along the backside of the cul-de-sac is where the apartments are being constructed now. Uh, so just kind of gives you a, uh, a layout in town here where, where it sits, uh, in proximity. So, originally, this property was slated for a gas station and 20,000 square foot commercial, uh, use. Um, as Tim mentioned, we went before the planning board, um, presented our plan. The plan we presented the evening of seeking a amended commission- conditional use permit, contemplated the self-storage units, and we had a lot of parking along the front of the property, uh, out towards Daniel Webster Highway. And one of the items the board discussed that evening was, is it possible the parking to the back of the property? Um, so we updating that conditional use permit plan, and was able to shift that, that parking to the rear. And ultimately, this is the plan and the layout that the conditional use permit, um, received approval on. So, with that, um, we are here seeking, um, approval for 57,550 square feet of single level, non-climate controlled self-storage with a 1,200 square foot office and 23 outdoor parking spaces.
Excellent. Um, thank you, Jason. Are there, uh, does the board have enough information so far in the presentation to determine whether the application is complete, um, which the, uh, staff has recommended that we, um, could find based on the information that's before us?
We have a lighting plan and an arch, a landscaping plan, I guess. We have a landscaping plan, I see that.
Jason, do you have both the lighting and landscaping in your package?
Yep. Uh, currently shown on the plan here is the landscape plan, and we have, uh, the lighting plan following that.
Oh, okay. Let's see, I've got it.
I believe it's sheet six and seven of the plan set.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I find nothing else.
And architect- and architecturals were attached to the, to the back of the package.
Oh, that's a good question, too. Yes, I see them here.
Okay. Any other questions with respect to whether we've got enough information to determine the application is complete? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Alastair?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept this plan as complete.
Is there a second?
I can come up, Mr. Chairman.
I think I heard Bill first. We'll call Bill our second. Um, if there's no further discussion, let's do a roll call vote. Neil, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Alastair?
I vote in favor.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Bob Best votes aye. 5-0-0 to determine the application's complete. Um, Jason, do you have further information that you want to present, or do you want to just kind of open up the floor for questions of the board? Um, or how do you, how would you like to proceed?
I'll, I'll go through some, uh, highlights, and then, um, if the board wants, uh, further detail, we can address, you know, certain items in, in more detail.
Excellent, let's do that.
All right, so I'll go back to the screen share here. So, as was stated, uh, this property is comprised of two, uh, separate lots, and upon, uh, the recording of the site plan, uh, we will conduct a voluntary lot merger, um, to be executed recorded at the same time. The combined lot area for both lots will be 5.7 acres with about 733 feet of frontage on DW Highway, and about 402, uh, feet of frontage along Benning Court. The site will be accessed from Benning Court out by the cul-de-sac. Um, the existing easement that, there's an existing easement that accesses, was intended to access the lot to the north and also provide access over to the abutters driveway to the north of the property. That will be extinguished, um, with, with this proposal. The property has been provided underground utility stubs, water stubs, sewer stub off the Benning Court cul-de-sac. The applicant has been in communication with the fire department and will continue to work with them on, uh, requirements for the site. The 1,200 square foot office space has eight parking spaces along the front, and the, uh, full facility will be fenced in, partially by ornamental fence and partially by a black vinyl coated chain link fence. Access down into the facility will be controlled by gated access with a key card, kiosks, and a loop detector for when vehicles are exiting. Uh, and again, work with the fire department on access through that gate, um, whatever means they, they need to get through there. Uh, there's a dumpster, uh, located down in the facility. That is for the office use, intended for, um, renters' use. We do show snow storage areas around the site. On the, the southerly end, again, along the northerly end, we have, oh, I'm getting, my internet connection's unstable, so if I lose your, I'll chime back in. Um, then we've got a, uh, larger area for snow storage should the other areas run out of space. They, they got an area that can be piled behind the storage building. With that, we've two outdoor parking spaces. We're proposing, uh, larger spaces, uh, behind one of the storage buildings, and then along the rear of the property, 21 additional outdoor storage spaces. There will be, uh, eight, as you see here on the plan, eight, uh, single level, um, storage units. They're going to have the roll-up doors going around the perimeter of the buildings, shed roofs, um... The site sign located out at the intersection of Benning Court and DW Highway. Uh, that site sign, there is a detail in the detail sheets. It is to match the sign package that was approved for the, uh, development proper. So, there is a sign that's proposed, um, on the opposite side, uh, in that site plan's, uh, approved plan set. So, we will mimic the same, the same sign. Site landscaping. Again, what I did is took a look at the, um, landscape plan that we had for the Abutting project, and I mimicked the plantings along DW Highway. Uh, same species, uh, approximate same spacing and so forth. Along the entrance, uh, again, we tried to mirror image, uh, that planting scheme that they had to create, you know, continuity, uh, at that entrance. My, uh, records of the previous site plan show there's, uh, plantings to take place going along the center and both sides of Benning Court. Uh, so those plantings are being shown here, but are by others. And then we've provided landscaping around the office and the parking area. In terms of, uh, drainage, uh, the entire site, um, paved area and buildings will drain to surface drainage system, catch basins and imp pipes. There are two, uh, hooded catch basins, um, on either end of, uh, detention system to capture oils, um, floatables, grit, and so forth. Those will empty into a pre-treatment chamber, uh, at the entrance of the subsurface chamber system. Then the storm water will infiltrate into the ground, receive its treatment by separation of groundwater, and then overflow and larger storm events will go out. There's an existing natural channel, uh, maybe man-made dug, dug years ago. Um, all the runoff from the site currently heads down through that channel, so we'll outlet that system to the same location. Um, we have worked with, uh, Malone and McBroom, an environmental consultant, um, also AOT and Hazardous Waste Bureau, uh, to obtain approval for infiltration on this project. Um, we are well aware of some other projects in town that have, uh, been trying to deal with this infiltration issue, so we have dealt with that upfront and received approval before we submitted our alteration to drain permit. We've also conducted, uh, wetland review of the site, soil, uh, survey, and had a wildlife assessment completed. The project has received sign-off from Division of Historic Resources, and the project will require an alteration to drain permit, and it is in the queue for review. We will need a local sewer connection permit. NHDOT has received our traffic memo, which does show a reduced, uh, traffic count over, um, what was contemplated under the original CUP. So, I don't anticipate any, uh, need for modification to the lighted intersection. Uh, but we are waiting, uh, DOT's comments. And as, uh, Tim had stated, we are waiting on the review comments from, uh, the Town's Review Consultant. We have seen the staff's comments, and at this time, there's no major issues there. Uh, we have no waivers requested for the application. And, uh, currently, uh, the abutter, uh, that's constructing the apartments has reached out with some comments and questions on this application. And, uh, following, uh, this meeting and hearing any comments from the board, um, he'll continue his conversation with them in, in addressing any comments of concerns. Um, we did meet with the Conservation Commission last evening. Uh, they did ask for, um, the fertilizer note to be added to the plan, so we will add that, and they also look to, uh, request a spill kit to be placed on-site. So, we will look in, uh, to add some notes pertaining to that. And this Thursday, we will be presenting the project to the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. So, with that, I will, um, ask if, uh, the board has any specific comments or questions.
Um, for my own part, thank you for rearranging the parking and putting it in the back way from the street. I think that, that, um, is, is certainly an improvement to the view that you'd have from DW Highway if you're having people store campers and boats and things. I think that's nice, and, um, it's also always very helpful when an applicant sort of, uh, takes advice from the board to heart. Um, I don't have any other comments or questions myself, and I'd open up the floor to others who might.
Actually, if I, I do have one more comment.
Oh, please.
On, based on that, um, go back to my screen share here. Uh, we have architectural plans, and it does give, um, nice views of, um, let's see. Here we go. So, this is the office building. Um, the rear is going to be, you know, inside the, the gated area. The basement will have garage access or, um, but you can see from the other views, it, it looks like a second. Then from the cul-de-sac at Benning's Court, this is the, uh, architect's rendering of, of what you'll see. You know, you can see how the s- storage buildings themselves sit down pretty low. Um, we're, we're doing a large cut and then filling the low side of the site. Then there's another view. This is entering in Benning's Court. And then, final view from out in, uh, Daniel Webster Highway.
Thank you for going through those. They definitely help. Um, do board members have comments or questions about the information that was presented? Nelson?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, first of all, I'm in, in view of full, full, for full disclosure, I should say that I've seen these plans because I am a member of the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee, and so we've had an opportunity to look at this earlier, and I found it pretty complete and pretty much addressed, uh, the issues associated with the river protection. And, uh, the one thing, um, I did ask about had to do with the paving. There was a question in the, in their, uh, analysis asking for paving, uh, information, the percentage of the, of the, uh, site that'll be impervious. And I don't know if you got that, Jason, or if someone else in your firm did, but...
Um, I would be the one to answer that, and to be blunt, I have not calculated that yet. Um, I need to per- prepare that for Thursday evening.
Okay, you got to Thursday then. Fair enough. Uh, otherwise, I thought it was a nicely done plan, and, um, the drainage, as I understood, the, uh, infiltration system can handle everything up to, and including the 50-year storm. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, correct. We, uh, for clarity, no runoff will exit the system through the two-year storm, and we match the 10, 25, and 50. The system is sized appropriately to handle and mitigate the full increase in runoff for the 50-year event. So, there is, there is some release in the 10, 25, and 50, but it does not, it, it falls under the pre-development conditions.
Pre-develop.
So, it is, is quite a large system.
Yeah, it, it seemed to be. The, there is a, um, I gather, a swale of some type that takes this to the river. Is that where it goes from here? It goes through an open swale, basically, to the river?
Yes, um, existing today, uh, the water mostly runs towards the, uh, northeast. Um, and it goes off to the edge of that existing parking lot. And from there, it's either a natural swell or a man, maybe a man-made cha- channel that, uh, cuts back and runs to the southeast and, uh, heads towards the river. But it's going to go through, I think it was somewhere upwards of 700 feet of, of woodland before it reaches- But it's gonna go through, I think it was somewhere upwards of seven hundred feet of, of woodland before it reaches that river.
Yeah. Okay, that should, uh, that, okay, that helps. I thought it, I thought it did better at capturing all the runoff. But, uh, you say it just does not increase it.
It does not increase, correct.
Okay. Uh, I couldn't find the sign. You mentioned a sign on your property and that. What, what, which plan does that show up on?
The detail?
It's on sheet two. I mean, didn't have the detail, but it just, its location on the site plan is on sheet two.
Sheet eight actually has the detail of the sign. Sheet eight, right above the title block.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at those in a second. Two and eight. And, um, the other thing I wanted to comment on was the, uh, was the landscaping. I think that's important, although I'm pleased to see that, uh, these buildings are set down and not not up the invisible. I think that, uh, makes this site look good and, yeah, can be very well done with landscaping. So I commend you for that. And, uh, all in all, I have nothing critical of the plan right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Does any other member of the board have comments or questions? If there are none, um, I, I know that it's the staff's recommendation that we ultimately, um, continue this, but, uh, it's also our practice to take the opportunity to receive public comment, um, at both the introductory and then, and then the follow-up, uh, meeting. So with that in mind, if there are any abutters or interested citizens, um, if you're using the telephone, you would press star nine to raise your hand. And then we would call you. I don't see either of the two phone call folks raising a hand. And so with that, we can, uh, before we close the public hearing, there was, um, some public comment received with a plan that had some landscape suggestions. Normally, we would read things into the agenda, but since it's a plan and not a narrative, we consider it entered into the record as it sits. Um, I assume that has been shared with the applicant, um, so that they can know that that's when, what an abutter had offered. And I don't have any other emails or comments that I'm aware of on, uh, public comments. Tim, am I overlooking any?
No, it was just the email from Bob Simons from SMC.
And that was the one that had the plan with it?
The landscape plan, yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Jason had mentioned that the, uh, the applicant is planning on meeting with them, uh, following this meeting and the Limerock meeting.
Understood.
Yes, and that is the email and plan that I, I believe I have here in my hand.
Okay. Excellent. So if there's no other public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Members, there are no waivers requested or, or for us to consider, nor have any been identified as part of our discussion here tonight. And with that in mind, we have a staff recommendation that we continue this so that we have an opportunity to receive our peer review. Tim?
Uh, just a couple of, uh, modifications I wanted to make to the board and to, uh, to Jason, uh, that have come to, come up since, uh, the memo was prepared. Uh, under our staff technical comments, item ten B regarding the ground sign, uh, question that, uh, Robert Price had added. Uh, there is a note and was part of the conditional use permit that that does not apply, does not require variance. So comment ten B will be stricken from the final, uh, recommendations when we get to that point. Uh, likewise, under ten C, part three, I was finally able to find the plan set where the sign detail was on sheet eight. Uh, however, we still do need the information regarding elimination to be added to that detail.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Tim. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Um, other than peer review, is there anything that we need to accomplish between now and our next meeting?
I don't think so. I think peer review, uh, and it, I wouldn't expect that we'd have final permitting from AOT or DOT, but certainly those are more than appropriate to be conditions of approval when we get to that point.
Yeah, that's kind of our usual practice on those. Okay. Uh, I, I, I wanna, you know, compliment the applicant. I think you've done a real nice job of, um, responding to some of the board's comments and making a self-storage facility, um, fairly attractive development, um, which is not always easy to do. Not always easy to do, but you did a good job with that. Um, if there are no other comments or questions by the board, then it would be appropriate to consider a motion to continue until, what are we going, March?
April sixth.
April sixth. There you go. Motion by Counselor Boyd. Is there a second?
Yes, it's chairman, I'll second it.
Second by Alistair. Nelson, you have a comment?
I was gonna second, that's all.
Oh, okay. Excellent. If there are no other comments, let's do our roll call vote. Um, Alistair, how do you vote?
I vote aye, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, Boyd?
Boyd votes aye.
Neil Anketell?
Vote aye.
Nelson Disco?
Aye.
Bob Best votes aye as well. Five zero zero. We'll see you in a month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You are welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, where's my agenda here? Those are minutes, not an agenda. Next item on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Um, I don't have any items of concern unless other people do. Good. I thought of one that just to mention as an announcement. Um, I know that we had had, uh, some communication from NRPC about our Town of Merrimack appointees to that. And, uh, the term of Karen Elmer had expired and, uh, was some misunderstanding about whether she wanted to be reappointed. She does wish to be, and so I suspect that the town council will take that up and make that happen. But just to share that with everybody, that, that, um, since that she might not be, has been resolved. Um, if there are no other comments from members of the board, then we are up to the approval of the minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Move for approval as written. Is there a second? Second by Neil Anketell. Um, discussion? Nelson?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments or questions. Maybe it's just me. On page four of the minutes, item H, it's line twelve. The, uh, the last sentence in that, this talks about the storm drain system. And this is, uh, the, uh, the building on the corner of Chamberlain Road, Chamberlain Avenue. The, uh, development shall provide for proper surface drainage and shall not adversely affect the neighboring properties. The storm drainage calculations were not reviewed as part of this review. The downfall of the detention shows it, the downfall directly onto the proposed sidewalk.
The word "it" should be removed.
Eventually shows the downfall directly onto the proposed sidewalk. Well, okay, again, that's, uh,
That was the comment that Dawn had, that it should not be downfall directly on the proposed sidewalk. That's why it's one of the conditions of approval.
Oh, okay. I didn't remember that coming up, but that's, uh, that's fairly significant. I didn't.
It probably was not read or discussed directly because it was in the staff memorandum as a recommended condition.
Yeah, okay, that one slipped right by, now, this is, uh, I think I would have liked to have discussed that. Anyway, let's see, there was one other comment somewhere in here. Sorry, give me one second and then.
Of course, take all the time you need.
I know you're all anxious to get to that school, maybe.
No, I am not. Didn't mean to be direct, but.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I lost it. But anyway, that was the more important one. It just struck me as, uh, something we overlooked discussing at the meeting itself because it, uh, it sounds, it sounds pretty bad the way it's written. And I just thought that maybe, uh, we would have discussed that a little bit. Okay, I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time.
No worries. Uh, any other comments? Bill, did you have a hand up, or was that just something moving across the screen? Okay, what do you got?
Okay, page two, the line forty-two. Uh, Mr. Peterson, there, there's an extra twenty. It has to do with the, the site from Chamberlain Road, turning, looking south and, uh, these, uh, positioning of the trees. And said, Mr. Peterson added that there is an extra twenty feet of right-of-way and demonstrated on the plan from the edge of pavement of DW Highway to demonstrate agreement with Chairman Best that they do not expect there to be any problems. Now, just the way this is worded, I, I, I think, I think the agreement, you, you, you all agreed eventually that, uh, there was no problem because, but I don't get the twenty feet.
I, I think you've, uh, certainly highlighted a sentence that you had to be there to understand what the heck that is talking about.
The extra, the extra twenty feet refers to the fact that the DW right-of-way is wider there than a typical fifty-foot right-of-way.
Yeah. And I think the point of all of that is that cars can approach DW Highway or be twenty feet further towards it and therefore not behind or blocked by any trees.
Correct.
Um, for that point. Now, is there a tweak to that sentence that could capture that a little bit better? Or Tim, do you just want to tackle that on, uh, administrative level?
Uh, I, I certainly could do that if the board's comfortable. I can make sure that that's made a little more grammatically, uh, correct.
Yeah, let's do that. Um, that's beyond a word or two switch to clear that one up. And let's just leave that in your hands to tackle. Unless, unless there's an objection by a member of the board. Okay, other comments or questions on the minutes?
I'm okay.
Um, if there are no comments, then let's vote. Um, Nelson, how do you vote?
I vote aye with the corrections as suggested.
Excellent. Neil, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Alistair?
I vote aye, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Boyd?
Boyd votes aye.
Bob Best votes aye as well. Five zero zero to approve the minutes. That is all the business that's on our agenda for tonight, which would lead us to the point where we might entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? I saw Nelson's hand first. Nelson's the second. Um, not a debatable motion, so let's have a roll call vote. Nelson?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Counselor Boyd?
Aye.
Alistair Mills?
Aye.
Bob Best votes aye as well. Five zero zero to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-nine. Thank you all, and, uh, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.